To order at 6:47. Pledge of Legion, led by Councilmember Menchaca.
Please rise. Face the flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the true republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll the call, please.
Mayor Ding.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
Close the session report. Our city attorney will be now give the closing session report from the special meeting, hold on, May 26, 2022, and June 6, 2022.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The council did meet twice in close session on the same item, conference with labor negotiators regarding employer organizations listed on the agenda. There were no reportable actions taken by the council in either meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have the same announcement from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Okay, approve agenda order. Do you have any objection for the agenda order? Here none. The agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentation A, proclamation for LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Mayor Ding will make the presentation, and San Gabriel LGBTQ+ Center Board Member Vicki Mitchell will accept the proclamation.
Okay. So this LGBTQ proclamation for LGBTQ+ and Pride Month. So that's, these months, it's a former president, Black Obama designed a first national monument to the LGBTQ, right in the June, June 2016, honoring the LGBTQ+ the community long-term present and struggling for the equality across our nation. On the June 2022 makes the fifth anniversary for the Stonewall rising in the New York City. So the city of San Gabriel is dedicated, continue offer to ensure equality and respect for all. The city council is also has established a city human equity assets and relation here commission. That's we established last year. The city of San Gabriel takes pride in the factors that we vibrated and diverse community and proud to join other community in the striving to build a stronger, better state and nation for the all resident. So I, Tony Ding Mayor, with the whole city council have this proclamation here. So and Senate Board Member Vicki Mitchell, right? Okay, yeah.
I thank all of you for this on behalf of all of your residents who are both LGBTQ, their parents, their family members. Each and every member of the LGBTQ is an honorable, participating member of our society. We cover all walks of life, all positions. We currently have legislators throughout the U.S. We have healthcare people working daily. And in honor of what today really is, we also have voting members of society, which is what we want and need so that we can elect proper leaders, people that will see life in this manner and will give honor to all the people that they serve. Thank you again.
Thank you, Vicki. Next one, it's Juneteenth Day. The Juneteenth also known as the Juneteenth Independence Day and the also Emancipation Day. Emancipation Celebration and Freedom Day. This oldest known celebration community to ending to the slavery in the United States and has been celebrated by the black community for over 150 years. And the President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on the January 1st, 1863. And declared that all the, all peoples held slave with the reborn state and henceforth should be free paving the way to the passing of the 13th amendment with the formal upris the slave in the United States of America. So it's, yeah, it's, that's Juneteenth celebration, it's a tribute that's also African-American then and now who found so long and worked too hard to make this dream of the equality reality. So I'm the Tony Ding Mayor with the all the council member have the proclamation here. So take a group photo of who accept it or just take a... Maybe, maybe our council, council, the commissioner, I saw the Chastity Norris came in to accept it. Okay. All right. And the next one, the public comments.
This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. Mr. Mayor, our first speaker this evening is Debbie Kilgore.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello again. I like getting up here and bringing up topics that are part of our city, that's I see. Before, a couple of months ago, I talked about trees, dead trees that are not being taken care of. Well, I'm back because nothing's been done. Code enforcement has been to one property and they cleaned up a little bit, but what they did, I saw the tractor that was knocking things down just pushed the trees to the side of the property. And there's all this dead vegetation. Right next to me, right next to electrical pole is a dead tree on the lot, and it is still there. And the school right up the street from us has a dead tree right there. That's where kids are, right next to the trash can. People go out and smoke in the parking lot. It hasn't been touched at all. The Chief Wallace said that they've been there, they've given notifications, and there's no response. So we need to do something because just in the presentation last hour, they talked about if electrical sparks come from electrical pole, that's a fire. And right next to those areas, there're dead vegetation, and we're gonna have a fire. And I don't want one that was like in Alhambra a few years ago where it spread to trees from the buildings that were burning. And we need to figure out a way to make these people be responsible in a timely matter and put a time limit on when it needs to be fixed. Otherwise, our city should have a legal way to go in and take those things down. Pay somebody and the property owners need to do it. Because property owners, you can't find. Although the big lot that I've had problems with in code enforcement is gone. He lives right in our area. But other people don't pay any attention and they ignore stuff. And we're gonna have some, a lot of problems. So please have code enforcement, Public Works, and whoever it needs to be, start looking at some ways to deal with these, please.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chastity Jennings-Nuys.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to participate in the proclamation and to accept that on behalf of the here commission. Exactly two years ago, I and several other members of the public provided public comments urging the city council to unanimously adopt Resolution 2031. Resolution 2031 was a condemnation of the murder of George Floyd, a call for reform on local, national, and international levels, and a pledge to an ongoing commitment of review and accountability by all city departments to fair, equal, and equitable treatment of the residents and visitors of our city. This resolution became the foundation of Ordinance 670 that established the here commission. At that time, in the months that followed, the adoption of Resolution 2031, there were passionate and extended debates and discussion with some residents and a city council member questioning the need for the here commission, asserting that San Gabriel didn't have the problems of bias, racism, and inequity displayed daily on our screens, and that the here commission was going to be a words-on-paper entity intended to divide the community. Fast forward to today, when for the second year we are celebrating the contributions of LGBTQ+ persons and the announcement of emancipation of enslaved black people in the South. Every month, we acknowledge that there is still bias, racism, discrimination, and inequity that plagues many groups in our society. The here commission is not only seen as legitimate, but our recommendations are being followed by the council, like anti-bias training for our city employees, and we are being assigned tasks like helping to develop a street renaming process. For those who claimed our commission was not necessary, I invite them to join our city council members as they attend events like Block the Hate and the Alhambra Teacher Association's Pride Festival last weekend. At a recent Kauanis meeting, Chief Harris affirmed his commitment to equitable community policing and acknowledged that he has had to dismiss officers because their behavior and conduct did not align with these goals. In the November election and elections to come, a candidate's sincerity and work to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community will be an issue to address. Our community is evolving, and if you want to lead San Gabriel, you will need to represent the ideals assigned to the here commission to advance and advocate equity, social justice, inclusiveness, appreciation, and respect for the diverse people and cultures that live, work, and visit our city. Thank you.
I have no additional cards. Is there anyone else wishing to address council?
No. Okay. Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Would any council member like to pull another item from a separate discussion? Hi. I hear none. So do I have...
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Motion by the council member Menchaca and second by Vice Mayor Harrington.
Motion passed by a vote of five zero.
The next item, please.
Public hearing, adoption of proposed operating budget, capital improvement program, fee schedule, position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limit for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
I now open the public hearing. And Financial Director Koho Lohkula will be make the presentation. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Very good job on my last name.
Okay. I tried to my best.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight is my pleasure to present the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 operating budget and capital improvement plan, as well as the fee schedule, position classification, and salary schedule and appropriations limit for fiscal year 2022-23. Before we get into the numbers, I just wanted to provide the background on the process that the city, city staff and city council has taken to bring us to this point today to have a public hearing on the upcoming year budget. The budget process began at the beginning of the calendar year. February, departmental, departments put together their expenditure plans, revenue estimates, and capital improvement programs. Those were submitted to the city manager who reviewed them along with the finance department. Budget meetings were held with each department to discuss their departmental budgets. Meetings were held with the executive team, and based on those meetings, a preliminary budget document was drafted. Moving on down, in April 2019, we did a public review of the city's fees at a regular city council meeting where fees were discussed and input was provided. April 28, 2022, at the special city council meeting, a public budget study session was conducted with the city council meeting, with the city council. May 2022, individual meetings were held with each city council member, the city manager and finance staff. And then that brings us here today where we're conducting a public hearing to present the budget and related resolutions for the possibility of the council's moves of adoption. The budget highlights for the upcoming fiscal year is the general fund is balanced with a slight budget surplus of $367,000. Our reserves are projected to increase to 6.7 million or 14.4% of general fund expenditures. The citywide budget, we have operating expenditures of 70 million. And there is 11.4 million of new CIP funding proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. All city funds, this includes the general fund, 21 special revenue funds, and three internal service funds. The total budget citywide is 81,406,000. The general fund makes up 57% of all city funds. Out of the 81 million, about 70 million is for operations and 11.4 million is the new funding for the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. And then on the upcoming slides, we'll take a look at the information in a little more detail. So the general fund is the primary operating fund for the city. The general fund is also where the city maintains reserves. Here is a summary of general fund revenues, expenditures, and the net change in fund balance. We also compare the 21-22 adopted versus the 22-23 proposed. Net change in fund balance, surplus of $367,000, highlighted in green. Looking at revenues, our ongoing revenues are projected to be higher by 2.15 million. Overall revenues are lower by 1.5 million. That's due to the one-time American Rescue Plan grant funds that was received and budgeted in 21-22, and since it's one-time, not available for 22-23. On the expenditure side, operating expenditures are higher by 1.9 million. The large percentage of that is in personnel as there were salary increases provided in the prior year. And transfers out to other funds is also higher by 428,000. A large portion of that is $300,000 that was budgeted to repay the Mission Playhouse parking lot. Here's the composition of general fund revenues. As you can see in the pie chart, taxes make up the large majority of our general fund revenues. These taxes include property taxes, utility user taxes, transient occupancy taxes or hotel visitor taxes, sales taxes, including Measure SG, the second largest revenue source being the transfers in. This is the transfer in from the retirement fund that's specifically used to pay for the city's pension costs. This slide compares our 21-22 adopted revenues as compared to the 22-23 projected. Taxes higher by 2.8 million. We can see our American Rescue Plan is intergovernmental because of the one-time nature of those funds. We have a decrease in the intergovernmental line of 3.6 million. And then overall, our revenues are lower by 1.58 million. Moving on to general fund expenditures. Here is the composition of our general fund expenditures. You can see the large majority is our personnel expenditures. This includes salaries, benefits, including pension costs. And this, this slide compares the 21-22 adopted general fund expenditures to the 22-23 adopted general fund expenditures. There's overall general fund expenditures are higher by 2.37 million. There's the three highlighted rows. Personnel is up by 944,000 due to the raises that were provided in the prior year. Increases in overtime and our pension liability payment is higher. Internal service fund allocations are up as this is the first year that the city has implemented an information technology internal service fund. And then transfers up are higher by 427,000, a total of 925,000. And those transfer amounts are for $350,000 to support the Mission Playhouse. As mentioned earlier, 300,000 to repave the Mission Playhouse parking lot, 55,000 for automated parking machines, and 220,000 for police radios and other equipment. This slide presents our general fund reserves. As you can see, the 22-23 reserve levels are projected to be at the 14.4% of general fund expenditures, about 6.7 million. This reserve level far exceeds our policy goal of 5%. Overall, our goal is to reach a 17% level by June 30, 2029. And then if you take a look at the projected reserve levels moving from 2023 through 2028, we're well on our way to meet our reserve levels and even surpass them. The model does include assumptions for revenues and expenditures, and it also does include an assumption for a 2.5% cost of living allowance increase. Other city funds, internal service funds, and special revenue funds. This slide presents all of the city's special revenue funds. Expenditures in special revenue funds are restricted for specific purposes. These restrictions include transportation, public safety, community services, utilities, pension costs, and other restrictions like air quality or other specific grant restrictions. This slide presents our three internal service funds of fleet services, risk management, and information technology. The cost of internal service funds are allocated out to all of the other funds and departments of the city on a cost reimbursement basis. And as mentioned earlier, the information technology internal service fund is new for fiscal year 22-23. Moving on to city staffing for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget includes 199 authorized full-time positions. All authorized positions are funded for the upcoming fiscal year except for one in the Mission Playhouse. There is one reclassification presented, and there are also equity adjustments are proposed for five full-time and four part-time positions. And then additionally, there are no cost of living adjustments built into the budget. Moving on to the city's capital improvement plan. So as mentioned earlier, there's a total of 11.4 million in new funding for the city CIP program. The highlight is 8.5 million for street improvements, 4.8 million of that being for the annual streets program. And then, as mentioned earlier, there's $300,000 budgeted to repay the Mission Playhouse parking lot. City's fee schedule for the upcoming fiscal year. Based on city council input, at the April 19 city council meeting as well as later council meetings, planning and zoning appeals are rates are lowered by 1,000, to $1,000 from nearly 2,000. Overall, fees will be increased by the January CPI for the Los Angeles area of 7.5%. Fees have been established for the Mission District outdoor space rentals with a rate for residential and nonprofit, with a residential nonprofit component. And staff is proposing to return the filming and special event fees back to the pre-pandemic rates. That includes a per-day cost. And a historic preservation designation and a Mills Act program fee has been established, taking input from the Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources Commission. It's a rate that is lower than what was proposed at the April 19 meeting of 2,315 for the application, 5,000 deposit for expenses that will be incurred. These fees will be effective July 1, 2022. Appropriations limit, also called the GAN limit. Annually, the city is required to establish an appropriations limit. This is the maximum amount of tax revenue that can be appropriated. The city's limit for the upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year 22-23 is 49,501,129, performing the calculation of what, what the city's tax revenues are of 29,542 million. The city is nearly $20 million below the limit. The city is nearly $20 million below the limit. And then financial challenges still facing the city. Although the budget is balanced and the general fund reserves are growing, there are still some financial challenges facing the city. The first one is we have an OPEB liability of 54.74 million dollars. As the city council know, knows, the city offers lifetime retiree medical for employees who complete a requisite number of years of service, which is, which we call other post-employment benefits or OPEB. This liability will continue to grow as more employees become eligible and health rates rise. Some potential solutions are establish a funding source to fund the liability and/or modify the OPEB benefits. Number two is create reserves for the city's capital, capital replacement or capital investment for our large capital costs such as HVAC units, roofs, major building facility cost, major software upgrades. Potential solution is, city staff is working on creating a policy to bring to council to, for future large capital costs. Planning to bring that in July. And then obviously, once, once we kind of figure out the money that we're going to need, then we'll need to find a way to fund the policy. Number three is our pension liability of 75.7 million as of June 30th, 2021. The city council, over the last few years, has been working on a solution to this challenge. And then due to the city's retirement fund revenue, the city has multiple solutions to address this challenge, including just amortizing the CalPERS liability with, with our city's retirement fund revenue, prepaying the liability as additional funds become available. And one of the solutions that we've been contemplating is refinance the liability with the pension obligation bond. And then finally is number four, we've talked about the contingency reserves. Our current goal is 17%. This is the minimum recommended, which is two months of expenditures. If we were able to increase our contingency reserves, that improves our credit rating. That'll improve our state audit score and just overall the financial viability of the city. Next steps, so tonight, we are conducting the public hearing. And if the city council so chooses, they may adopt the budget tonight. If not, we can bring it back on June 21st. July 1st, the new fiscal year will begin. And the old, the prior fiscal year will end. From July through December, city staff will be working on closing out the city financials, which will be audited, and financial statements will be published by December 31st and submitted to the GFOA for the award that they offer. And then in February of 2023, city staff will formally bring a mid-year budget review. And on an ongoing basis, the city staff will provide monthly financial updates as well as budget amendments as needed. So staff's recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2223 operating capital, operating and capital improvement program budgets, fee schedule, position classification and salary schedule, and appropriations limit. And after receiving comment and testimony, adopt the following resolutions. That concludes my presentation. Take any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have the technical or factual question for the staff and clarify that report?
One quick question. Under staff recommendation, is it one motion or do we have to go one by one? One motion, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Chief City Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor Ding. Regarding the tax revenue in, in 2022 and 2023, it shows that the number that the tax income, including the property tax, retail selling, sales tax, and maybe all the permit income. I don't know if you have also calculated the possible vacancy of some of the shopping centers. They may have, will have the modifications or renovation. And they were just closing on some of the business and those are pretty major taxpayer. Have our numbers included those possible loss of our tax income?
Thank you, Councilmember Wu. You know, those numbers haven't taken any of those changes that may happen in the future. Are, are, we use a third party to estimate our sales tax budget. And so he's using historical information and, and his assessment of, of the economy to come up with this number. So those changes that may be happening currently are not taken into consideration.
So do we, is this number also include the projected income that possibly will be? Because we have 19 projects in our city. And we, very possible that we will have more property tax income too, but some of the retail store for the beverage. So do we include those projected income in our budget today?
Yeah, we use a third party for our property taxes as well. And so what they're using is the assessed value that the, that the LA County assessor puts out on January 1st. And, and, and then there is, there is an estimate in there for new assessments that may take place. It comes in, in a different line, other property tax revenue. So there is a conservative kind of estimate of additional revenue that may come in. But, but if there is more development than kind of historically, then that number will probably be higher.
And Councilmember Wu, I can add to that just because Will wasn't here when we had the history. But the part of the, or one of the major reasons we had our financial situation is because the city was over-projecting those revenues on projects that were coming out of the ground. And the budget was predicated upon realizing those revenues. So it's important to note what Will is saying, which is that our projections include just the normal turnover from construction or from people selling their homes or businesses and the reassessment that comes from those. But it doesn't include any of those 14 or 15 projects on a line item basis, whereas we used to do that. So I think it's going to be conservative. And as the last few years have shown, we will more than likely outpace those when those projects come online.
This is good, but thank you so much. The reason I bring that, raise that issue because several own, business owners from one of our shopping centers, it's called Focus Plaza, that we know that they have, the owner of the plaza, they have planned, they are planning to renovate their shopping centers. But the business owners, they are getting more anxious because they did not get the lease renewed, which means potentially that will be end of their business. They have to look for another location. Do you have any ideas or have you ever spoke to? The property owner maybe, they'll get help us to answer that better. But actually, that raised my concern because we have several major taxpayers that, in that shopping centers. So what is our, you know, what is their plan? And do we have any plan B to back up if there'll be a possible vacancy for those major taxpayer?
Yeah, so we, we have, well, first of all, some, some background with respect to that project is that the applicant has not submitted for plan check yet. So they're, they're actually evolving the project as we speak. It was at first a facade improvement. Now it was a facade improvement, but also some interior work. So that could explain some of the, the lease issues because some of the interior spaces are going to be revamped in some respect. And so we do have contact with the property manager for the site in case we need to get involved with supporting relocation efforts. So we're going to re, sort of ramp up that effort as we get closer to sort of project submittal. But until now, we're just waiting to see when that project is finally evolved and then submitted to the city, and then we'll take the next step.
Okay, so if they are going to be, I don't call it evicted, but they have to find a new place. Do we have any plan B so we can retain the business and retain the property, the, the sales tax in our city?
What we'll do is we'll look at those opportunities that we have. We call it opportunities, which are vacant sites currently, and look to see if we can sort of facilitate the moving of that business into one of these spots. Again, we won't take that approach yet until we know exactly what the project is going to look like and what kind of renovation interior-wise that the project applicant is looking at.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, okay. Okay, Chief City Clerk, please read any comment received.
Mr. Mayor, I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to address council on this item?
No, okay. Okay, it's for myself, just take. Okay, I now close the public hearing. Oh, yeah, next one, it's council deliberation and discussion, okay. Yeah, okay, I, like, we have the major SG estimate looks like on the, it's, because we are, major SG, I saw the 2021, it's four, four million. And 2021 to 2022, it's 3.6 million. The last year, this year, it's 4.3 million. The next year will be like 4.2 million. And, and back to the state sales tax, it's a regular sales tax, right? It's another major SG one. So it's, it looks like estimate 4.4 and next year the 4.5. So it's literally increased. That one, another one is literally decreased. So it looks like, I don't know, this figure is correct or not.
You're looking at Measure SG from the 2122 estimated of 4.3 million and the proposed of 4.2 million.
Yeah, it looks like it reduced, but another sales tax should be, both tax, sales tax is related, right? One is major SG, one is a regular sales tax, right?
Yeah, so, you know, you can see when we originally budgeted 2122 for Measure SG, it's at 3.6 million. So it did significantly better. And then, so that's how, that's why the estimate was increased to 4.3 million. So the 4.2 million is we were relying on our third-party HDL, you know, consultant to come up with the sales tax revenue. So they're looking at the sales tax, sales tax activity. And that's kind of the number that they're recommending of what they feel comfortable with, of budgeting for our sales tax revenue of 4.2 million. So that's, that's what we went with. And they're also recommending the 4.3 million as well.
Yeah, but my question is a little bit of conflict with the sales tax you estimate. Yeah, it's, it looks like you estimate 4.4, but the next year we increase to the 4.5.
The reason for that, Mayor Ding, thank you very much, it's a great question. The reason for that is twofold. One, as COVID is closing down, hopefully, or at least the, the economy stays open. People are shopping less online and they're going back more to brick and mortar. And we receive a much higher percentage of the online sales through Measure SG than we receive in the state sale tax. The other reason that, that state sales tax is going up faster than the Measure SG is because as we do recover, the restaurants are opening. So for the past two years, you know, places like Five Star Seafood were almost completely closed. And as they are full and, and busy again, those are increasing our, our local sales tax numbers. Our, our state sales tax numbers is where that shows up. So it normally, you're right, that it would normally go up at the same pace.
Yes.
But because of the fact that one is recovering from COVID and the other one is actually dropping a little bit.
Okay.
That's why there's a little bit of a imbalance.
Okay, thank you, Mark, thank you for your answer. Okay, all right. So we have any question too? Just who make a motion or?
I'll move to approve all the resolutions.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Menchaca, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. Clerk, please take a vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Next, next item, please.
Continued Business Item A, Discussion Regarding San Gabriel's Transit Program. City Manager Lazaretto will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have to apologize in advance. This would have been Rebecca Perez, Director Perez's presentation, but she's out ill tonight. So I'm going to do my best impression of, of her, not as well as her, but I'm going to try. I do have members of First Transit, our current provider here, as well as RideCo, who is going to be doing the micro-transit portion of our, our new program. So they're here as well as Matthew Morales Stevens, in case any questions come up that I can't handle. But the reason that we're having this discussion tonight is, thank you, Marilyn. The reason I'm, we're having this discussion tonight is because council adopted the program back in April 19th of expanding our traditional dial-a-ride service to include what we're calling micro-transit. And that, just to refresh everybody's memory, is an ability for general riders, not just our seniors or disabled passengers, to have a ride within the city using an app-based service, similar to a Lyft or an Uber. And when we adopted that contract, we still had some parameters that we had to choose in order to customize the service for San Gabriel. We're going to work through all of these parameters. We're going to talk tonight about the name for the service. We're going to talk about the parameters for how we design our program, and then I'll give you a timeline. And as we go through the parameters, after we get through the name discussion, as we go through the parameters, just keep in mind that if we expand opportunities for people to ride or make it more flexible, it lowers the level of service. So there's sort of a trade-off. Or we would have to raise the cost in order to keep that same level of service. So it isn't what we would call a zero-sum game. So as we go through each of these items, just keep that in mind as we go through the recommendations. So for the names of the transit service, our staff looked into various options, trying to keep it catchy, trying to keep it short and memorable. Three options we came up with were RideSG, Ride San Gabriel, or SG Ride. All three of those have been checked for making sure there aren't other websites or apps or, or ride services that use those names. So all of those would be available. Our staff recommendation is RideSG, but council can obviously choose whatever they would like. Once we have a name, then we would design a logo for that. That's what we're going to be working on for the next few months. And that'll be part of our outreach campaign to try and make this fun and, and exciting for folks. And that logo and that name will be part of it. I would like to go through each of these one by one. And if we can get staff, council to decide on these as we go through, it'll probably be easier than coming back. So if we can stop for a second and get feedback from council on the name, does anybody have any, any big feelings one way or the other towards what that name should be?
Any comments? Councilmember Rivera?
No, I, I like RideSG rather than SG Ride.
Okay, well.
Seems like everybody's comfortable with RideSG?
Yeah, yeah, sounds like it's short and easy to remember, right? Okay.
All right, thank you. So moving on, as we go through the parameters, we'll talk about the time of service, the area of service, the cost to the riders for the service, who would be eligible, and then the age of those riders. So the time of service, currently our dial-a-ride operates from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days per week. We would have three options for this. We could keep it the same as the current dial-a-ride. We could expand those hours of service to go either earlier in the morning or later in the evening to try and, if we're using it for a micro-transit purpose, I could see it wanting to be later for people who are going to the restaurants or to, you know, Valley Boulevard, might want to stay later than 7:00 PM. But the trade-off for that is either ride frequency or the, the ability to get a ride quickly will go down. Or we would have to increase our cost in order to have more buses out there or vans out there at one time in order to keep that level of service. And the third option would be to continue. And the third option would be to continue with those same hours as the dial-a-ride, but monitor it throughout the year and then come back to council with recommendations for changes after year one. As we go through each of these, that, really that third option of coming back and, and changing it throughout the year is probably going to be an option for all of them because we will be monitoring the data as we go through this. If something is working well, then we'll keep it. If something is working very, not, not so well, then we would come back to council and request a change at that time. So, long story short, for the hours of service, we are recommending that we keep it with the seven to seven and come back to council with a recommendation after a year. Any concerns with that staff recommendation or hard thoughts about that?
Counsel, Vice Mayor Harrington?
I don't have a concern, but more of a question. So for example, how do we know if, if it's, we're going seven to seven and someone wants a ride at eight, how would we know that? Are they logging into the app and then they make a comment? Or is it actually catching that in real time that someone's trying to get a ride and it's not available?
That would have to be likely done through some sort of a comment or a, a suggestion box. It wouldn't come up as an option to book a ride either in the future for a time outside of seven to seven or if somebody was trying to get a ride either early in the morning or late at night, it wouldn't come up as an option to get that ride. So that's, that's a great question. We'd have to have some sort of a suggestion box or what have you.
Yeah, so I was thinking if it's built into the app, that it would say if you're outside of the hours, would you normally request a time, a ride at this time and we can get feedback that way?
That's great. So almost a virtual suggestion box.
Yeah, and then the second thing is, I really do think if, 7:00 PM is a little early on, like say Thursday, Friday, Saturday night. So I don't know if it's flexible to have different hours at different nights or is this just, like, you know, weekends, obviously, people are going to be out later than, you know, Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, so even Sunday night. So I don't know if that's possible in the beginning or not, but that's something we should look into as well.
Thank you.
Any council member? Okay, so, yeah, can we estimate like maybe weekend so we can change the timeline?
Maybe have like a weekend rate or something?
It's seven to seven, maybe weekend and maybe ten to ten?
Like a weekend rate, a little bit higher than normal?
I mean, the time is a ten to ten or?
Well, there's going to be increased cost if we increase the hours.
But actually, so I, ten to ten is not an increase hours. If you use seven to ten is an increase hour.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, okay.
For the weekend, a lot of people, yeah. Maybe nine to nine?
I think the issue there is a lot of the normal riders right now, they are early riders. So we'd be cutting them off in the morning, like on a Saturday or a Friday, because if they have appointments.
How about still seven to, for weekend, is it seven to ten?
Yeah, so I just like to see costing on it. We don't have to make that decision now, but just see what would be the impact?
Yeah, that's, I wanted to know the, how much cost extra, you know?
We can come back with that information. We'll start with the seven to seven and come back with the cost to increase the hours from Thursday to Sunday.
Okay.
Or what the trade-off would be in reduced riders flexibility. We can come back with that as well.
Okay.
Are we currently doing weekends? Is this seven days a week?
We are doing seven days a week, seven to seven.
Do we have like a data of like in the past years, is there more riders on the weekends and during the week or?
We can definitely come back with that. We do have our rides. Zach, do you know what that is off the top of your head?
Well, currently we're actually.
Would you, would you mind coming to the podium so the TV land can hear what you have to say?
Smile, you're in camera.
Currently, city of San Gabriel is averaging close to forty passengers per day. However, your weekends are a lot lower at about twenty to twenty-two. The suggestion of reviewing this possibly in one year will be very wise since you are going to open up the microtransit, which is going to open up a new market. And we will have data that we can at least compare apples to apples and then make a decision whether it is worth the, the extra expenditure to open up the, the service up to ten o'clock, eight o'clock or, you know, or so. Keep in mind that in your area, the last service in your area is at eight o'clock at night within the San Gabriel Valley, with the exception of Morrovia that runs twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, because the, I also think about we have the dumpling and the beer, the festering. That's Friday, right? That's a Friday, so probably, how can we use the special day for the, that day? We can have the mall because the help, the attendee can have the distance transportation to ride over there. We can save that parking space too, you know. I just say there's some special day, you know, can we think about it?
And then thinking about the future, I mean, all these new projects coming up on Valley Boulevard, people might want to go there and stay later, have dinner, new restaurants, new things.
This definitely seems like something we would want to keep that on and figure out as we move forward, expanding those services.
Can we possibly visit it in six months and see where, just getting, just the numbers? We don't have to have a whole presentation, but if you could just post some numbers for us?
Yeah.
The cost and just by then we'll have an idea.
So maybe we study, first of, I think that dumpling beer, maybe it's a weekend testing used this year. Otherwise, you'd wait another year, right? So I, I hope we can do this some testing for special event, especially for the city event, you know?
That's right, and we, two comments there. One is that we definitely can come back with information on the ridership. Six months is probably not going to have too much info because it's going to take us about that long to roll out the microtransit service. As you'll see at the end for the timeline, we're talking about rolling this out for the dial-a-ride in the next month and a half or so and then expanding that over the next four months or so. So we will come back when we have six months' worth of data and then present it to the council so it won't be in six months. And then for the, the events like dumplings and beer, I know, for example, Vice Mayor Harrington is working on that planning committee and that was one of his ideas to try and work with Lyft and Uber and I'm sure that with our microtransit, we can work for one-off events like this that don't have to go within the normal parameters. There could be a cost associated with that on a, on an event-by-event basis, but that's something we could work into our, our contract and it does help the Mission District and it does help people come to our events. Matthew, did you have something else that you wanted to add to that?
A quick comment. The first six months will be a dial-a-ride strictly program and then the, the actual data will be collected after the six months. So this is almost a one-year turnaround to get complete data on the microtransit and its effectiveness.
Thank you, Zach. So that was actually my, my, my comment as well. So I think we'd have a, a much better outlook as to what the general population would be using since the, the initial rollout would be the six months. It would be our current dial-a-ride users for the six months, getting them familiar with the program. So we already have that data. It may change a bit since it'll be a lot more user-friendly and they can use the app and there's more resources at their disposal. But really, that the next set of six months will be where we'll be able to access the people that are going to Valley Boulevard and, and having dinner with family and, and things like that. So we wouldn't want to give you a false indication of what the general population or those that are even beyond the, the senior and persons with disabilities that are using the, the service.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just had a quick comment. So I, I was on that, what's it called? TMID tour and marketing improvement district and that was partnership with the hotels. And one of the ideas was to have a whole separate transportation that would start at the hotels and then they would just stop at key locations. With what we're looking at right now, there is limited space. So if you wanted to do a special event, I, I think it would be more cost-efficient if it was a separate type of vehicle, like a, like a van or a, a big bus or something that could actually bring people in. With the hotels, I think they're also looking at maybe a smaller version, maybe fitting ten, fifteen people at most. But I think with special events, we may want to consider doing something different because these, these, these vans, I guess are called, I mean, what, what's the capacity? How much do they really fit?
Your current vans are nine ambulatory and two wheelchairs. Nine ambulatory and two wheelchairs.
Yeah, so I, it's just something for, for us to also consider since it sounds like we're going to come back in a year and, you know, we look at the data, but maybe thinking of alternatives for, just for special events and, and where would people park, you know, we would pick them up where specifically? And hopefully, if we can get a, a bigger vehicle, I mean, I, I know it's not the same, but I think about the Hollywood Bowl, I think about, you know, those type of venues where I've been on those buses and they have different places and they're coming in and it is much more efficient, but it's, but we have some events that are pretty large, not that large, but they're still large. So maybe kind of start thinking about alternative vehicles too, just a thought.
And that's great. I think what we're talking about maybe are two different things that could operate in conjunction for our events. We're talking about potentially a shuttle service that would be just back and forth for the event. Maybe you have an off-site parking at one of the hospital lots or even something a little further away. And then it just goes back and forth every fifteen or twenty or thirty minutes, taking people back and forth to the Mission District. At the same time, you could have an enhanced ridership for the dial-a-ride where it picks people up at other locations in San Gabriel, drops them off and then takes them, you know, back. So that would be sort of twofold and you're right, those would be two different vehicle types and one might be a, a short-term contract for one event with a, with a transit company or even First Transit outside of our dial-a-ride contract. And then the other could be part of this contract. So we're looking at all of those options.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have, the next parameter is the area of service or the limit to any destinations. Right now, our dial-a-ride customers enjoy rides that are anywhere within city limits or locations outside of the city within five miles, typically to doctor's appointments or pharmacies or those kinds of things. The two options we would have would be to limit the dial-a-ride customers, continue to allow them to have five miles outside of the city so they can continue their current option. And then for all other general passengers, limit it only to pick up and drop off locations within the city. We could do the virtual suggestion box for that and try to get information from people as we go on to say, you know, would you be interested in five miles or what other locations would you like to see? But starting out, we would recommend keeping it with the five miles for our dial-a-ride passengers and, and within city limits for all other passengers. Okay. So the cost for service, right now, our dial-a-ride customers are charged fifty cents each way. What we're recommending is that we keep that fifty cents each way for the dial-a-ride customers and add a one dollar each way for our general passengers with children under five riding for free. There is at least one other microtransit city, I believe it's Moore Park, that does the one dollar each way and that seems to work out. Again, we could look at this in the future. If we have so many riders that we are oversubscribed, we could always increase that, that cost and that could help us fund another van and, and driver in the future. So again, that's something we could come back with information in the future, but the recommendation would be a fifty cents and a dollar. Concerns with that?
Okay, council member?
Thank you, Mayor Ding. A quick question about the, the capacity of the, the vehicle. Actually, this is more like a larger van. It's not a bus. So for those kids that under five are free, are we providing them any child seats? Is that required? Because we have like minors and this is a different vehicle from the bus. It's not the just regular bus transportation. This is more like smaller vehicles. So do we have any concern about that and the insurance would be covered by the microtransit? But, I mean, how we accommodate the, the law or the, the needs of the child seats?
Zach?
Thank you.
Currently, the microtransit system is limited to thirteen age and, the, the age of thirteen and above. If a parent would like to transport a toddler, for example, they will have to bring their own seat, which we have the capability of hooking up to our, to our chairs.
So that means each vehicle, each, we call the SGV Ride, right? Ride SG?
Ride SG.
Ride SG, okay, we, we're trying to get used to the new name. And each, Ride SG has the child seats onboard. So that is ready for the, you know, for, for passenger to use. Is that correct?
The current, your current buses that we have, which will be used on Ride SG, have the capacity of hooking up a child seat to them. So if you are a parent that's going to be bringing your child or a toddler that requires a child seat on the ride, you will have to bring your own.
Okay, so parents has to bring their own child seats for that?
Or booster seat. However, we have the capability of, you know, the hookups and all that are all available on the bus.
Got it. So that is not something come with the bus?
No, it's.
It's, okay, got it, thank you.
No problem.
Now, is that something that you require or is it optional for parents?
Well, there, there is an, there is an age or the, or a sixty-pound, fifty, sixty-pound limit where the child has to be in a chair. So that chair has to be with the child when they come to board the bus.
So you require it?
I beg your pardon?
You require it? It's not an option for the parent?
It's by law, required by law.
So software would be the disclosure they require when they bring the kids onboard. They have to bring the, the, the child seat, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just to clarify. So when the parent signs up, there's a statement there, you must bring your own seat, child seat?
It has, it has a pop-up that talks about age and at the same time about the age restriction at this point of time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Which brings us to our next category. Actually, I thought it was age. That's going to be the following one. Eligible riders. We were trying to figure out ways of limiting it to, as an example, city residents and people who are staying in the hotels. And the more we thought about it, we thought if we limit the rides to people who are either getting picked up in the city and, and being dropped off in the city, it's a benefit to our restaurants and our hotels. It doesn't matter where they live or where they work. If they're getting picked up and dropped off, they're doing business or they're living in our city. So as long as we have that parameter of all rides being within the city, we felt like that's a good way to, to go and we would not have to have a resident parameter. So it would be, continue to be dial-a-ride, passengers would, would have the eligibility requirement with everybody else, as long as they're getting picked up and dropped off in San Gabriel, no problem.
Any comments? If not, just a, just a staff recommendation. So.
So for the age of the eligible riders, we are recommending that we continue the dial-a-ride being available to sixty-two and older and the individuals with disabilities that are currently our dial-a-ride folks. And then for the general passengers, we would have anybody thirteen or older unless they're accompanied by an adult. And then as we had in our couple of minutes ago discussion, they would be required to have a, a child seat if they were of that age. So our recommendation is thirteen and older to ride without an adult and the dial-a-ride passengers.
Yeah, okay.
What do you, what do you mean by considering another parameter of age? Like what would that suggestion be?
So you could go younger than thirteen or older than thirteen. You could say fourteen or fifteen or sixteen is the, the age limit. We came up with thirteen, thinking that's a middle schooler that might take it alone, you know, home from a after-school event. Right now, we're talking about, I think it's in one of the future slides about limiting destinations potentially to not being school. Actually, that was the, the past one, not being during school days to and from school because that would severely limit the other rides that people would have. But after school, somebody could take it home from band practice or, or, or football practice or what have you. And those kids are, could be thirteen years or older for after-school programs and be by themselves. So long story short, thirteen years is the recommendation, but council could choose to go older or younger than that. Just what we feel comfortable for an accompanied minor, what age?
Yeah, so the question, if they thirteen years old, the who, who's liable if just in case it happened? I also asking the, the, the company too. So what's your regulation, the age?
Well, at this moment, we are using the thirteen years of age as, you know, I mean, our general insurance does cover them in case of an accident or an incident. Under thirteen, we're talking about a little bit more liability. And at the same time, we're looking at school busing versus general transit or microtransit that is more for the general public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Please.
Do you have other cities who also have that thirteen age limit?
And higher, yes.
And higher, okay. I mean, I'm not completely comfortable with it, but as long as we're covered and there's other cities, you know, again, we're going to revisit this in a year. So it gives us a chance to see what the needs are. And once they're in middle school, I can still remember, I think, you know, they're capable. Taking a bus and not getting lost, but I am a little bit uncomfortable with it, but I'm, I think at this point, we'll just see how it goes.
And in one year, we'll be able to, we will have the data, so to speak, that where we can give better recommendations. At the same token, we'll have the virtual suggestion box that will give us a treasure of what we can, cannot do or what is needed. And that's how we will adjust accordingly.
Mayor? Mayor Dean?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, I have another question. How many Ride SG will be in service in our city? How many vehicles?
Four.
Four. So that's saying if somehow that we have more demands on that. And people, they use the app and they cannot find a car or they cannot get the service. So what is the solution for that? I mean, people would just keep complaining about, this is not working because the car is always like fully occupied. And how, how you deal with that? I mean, for other city?
Okay, let's start, let's go back. First of all, you have three vehicles and one spare. So it's a total of four vehicles, three that are in service and one spare. I would like to make that very clear. Number two, at that point of time, we're going to have to come back to Rebecca and Mark and have a conversation. Of course, with RideCo's help, and again, they are, they are themselves a powerhouse when it comes to data and information. So they will come back and say, look, guys, here's, here's the problem. You're having one too many rides from these hours to these hours, these hours to these hours. It might be worth it putting a fourth bus out there. And that's what we'll do. We'll put the fourth bus, of course, after Rashidi and team gets involved with Rebecca and all that good stuff. But at the end of the day, is there a time in a year where we're going to have complaints that, I'm trying to book and I cannot? Yes, especially when you put in the younger, the younger, the younger age where they block all that, two to four, seven, ten, eight. So you're going to have that issue at the end of the day. Are we prepared to add more buses? That's going to be a decision that you guys, that you're going to make in accordance, again, with the data that's going to come back to you and see if it's worth it or not, you know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's where if we are being oversubscribed, we can raise the price for those general riders and that could help fund that extra bus. Or we can make the decision to use more of our transit funds to fund another bus. Great, thank you.
So, yeah, another also question, if they request the, based on the capacity, like around the, like nine passenger, can ride the same time? So normally, so how many people will be, if ordered, so for example, right now, probably you already have four people, but the rest of the people may be an hour later. So how do you start the service for them? How many, I mean, how many passengers you will be start a service to send it to the city and the area?
So one of the unique things about the app is that it does all of the scheduling.
Okay.
And it's not, it's designed to be microtransit on demand, but it's a little different from a Lyft or an Uber. People shouldn't expect that I can go on an app and get a ride in five minutes and have somebody take me from a location home, you know, within five minutes. There might be times where the service is, is slow enough that that happens, but the majority of this would be for people who are planning a little bit ahead. A few hours to, you know, a few days, like our Dial-A-Ride service. But it doesn't give, like an Uber or Lyft where it drops one passenger off and then when it's done, it goes back into service and picks another passenger up. It schedules these rides picking and dropping off passengers up throughout the city. So when you would put into the app, if I need four riders, it would schedule that those four seats would be full. And so it would do the algorithms to figure out, can it stop and pick up more passengers along the way? Or do we have to continue and drop these passengers off before we can pick up one or two or three more? That's all handled on the backend by the app.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
One more question. How long have we had that pricing for, the fifty cents?
Oh gosh. Zach, how long have we had that in place?
First of all, for as long as I can remember. But I would like to make a real comment about, Mayor, your question. The system that RideCo has is phenomenal. And what it does is optimizes the maximum amount of riders. So if I was to take a ride, Councilman Rivera and yourself are going to take a ride. We go on the app. I want eleven-thirty. If it's available, it books it for me, calculating where the bus is or what is the closest bus to me. But then you go on the app and you say, I want eleven-forty-five ride, and it might be right next to where I am. The system automatically is always optimizing to make certain that there's the maximum amount of riders on the bus and/or ridership by the end of the day to service everyone. I just wanted to make that clarification. So as far as fifty cents, we're there for a long time.
That's good. Then we'll see that after six months, the result, right?
Yeah, because, I mean.
Okay.
And then the next is cancellation or no show fee. So as Zach just explained how the rides are booked, we're, because of the fact that everybody's inconvenienced or rides may be taken out of, off the app if somebody books and then doesn't show up, we are suggesting that there be a cancellation fee where they're automatically charged the dollar for that, not taking that ride. And it is equal to the cost of the ride and it's for somebody who either doesn't cancel with more than two minutes after the driver has accepted or if they don't show up within five minutes of the scheduled pickup. So long story short, if they cancel their ride without calling us within a certain amount of time or going into the app, they would be charged the one dollar for that ride. That would be the staff recommendation.
So the time, it's, it looks like it's five minutes before they cancel it? They can, no charge or?
Two minutes before the, excuse me, after the rider accepts. So when, when the algorithm comes back and gives you a time that you would be picked up, then you would have two minutes after that you accept to turn around and cancel. And once you've accepted, if you don't show within five minutes, then you would be charged as well.
Okay. But for example, you say that sometimes they, like two days before they booked it. So how long they can cancel? They still only two minutes or they, before the riding?
I think I'm going to refer this one to RideCo as how they, they have handled it.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rikesh Akhibai. I'm with RideCo. So the way we can set up the system is, to your point, Mr. Mayor, even if you booked a ride two days, two weeks ahead of time, there's no charge unless the passenger decides to cancel the ride two minutes or before the ride is associated or given to a driver to pick them up. Up until that point, there's no charge. But if a passenger decides to cancel the ride within the two-minute window that the driver has accepted the ride and basically is on his or her way to pick up the passenger, if a passenger cancels or cancels the ride or decides not to show up, then we charge the passenger the fee associated with the ride.
Okay, well, that's, that's good. That's also convenient, right? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Is there a prompt on the app that says your ride has been accepted? Like, so it would give you that two-minute window?
Right. So the way we display that information to, to the passenger is when a ride has been given to a driver and the driver is on its way, we send, we send an SMS text message to the passenger indicating the driver is on his way or is on her way. So at that point, the passenger knows that there is now a driver that's going to be driving towards the passenger's pickup location. And then the system gives a, an estimated ETA time, estimated time to arrive. And, and that time is continuously updated on the, on the application, on, let's say, the passenger's mobile app so they can monitor that. So, and then essentially, eventually, when, once we get to within that two-minute window, if they decide to cancel, the recommendation is that we basically do not refund the passenger for that, for that ride that they booked.
So after they've been notified, two minutes after they've been notified, they can't cancel?
Yeah.
Without a fee, got it.
So actually, after you text to them first and after they receive a text, within two minutes, if they cancel it, they no charge. Otherwise, still continue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Ah, okay. All right. Sounds like a convenience, yeah. So, you have, okay.
If you don't mind, let me have one more question. It's about the app. So about the pay, the payment, that means each user, they have to register their own personal information. And so that will be in the data. And there'd be no data links history or issues to your app?
So your, your question was with regards to the personal data, is that?
Yeah, personal data because actually if they're going to do the payment, I mean, every user, they need to download an app. And they will need to register their own account through the app.
Correct.
Is that correct?
So it, it's slightly different depending on what type of passenger they are. So if they're, for example, the current Dial-A-Ride users, which would be the seniors and persons with disabilities, they would still need to register through our office to make sure that they meet the requirements to, to have the reduced rate in this instance of the fifty cents. They would then have the option as well to pay with cash at the time of their ride or using the card. They would also have the option to call as well. So let's say there's a senior who cannot use the app at all or simply chooses not to use the app and to continue calling the call center. They can continue, continue to do so. So the fee would actually only be applied to those who are inputting their card information into the RideCo app. So that, if there is the senior or someone who's just choosing to pay with cash at the time of the service, the fee couldn't be applied since there's nothing to apply it to.
I see. So they can use cash? They can use the Apple Pay and credit card?
Definitely credit card. I'd have to defer to RideCo.
There is a sensor that we can beat?
No Apple Pay yet.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's not in the plan. But as, as Matthew indicated, certainly cash and credit card information, which at the time of registration, we collect that information from the passenger. And it's stored on the system. And any subsequent ride that they book, their credit card is charged for the, for the fee.
Okay.
The fifty, fifty cent fee for Dial-A-Ride passenger or a dollar for general ambulatory passengers.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? No, okay.
Well, that's it for the parameters. So we will bring back a program that's designed for those parameters and then we'll update council throughout the time as it's, as it's kicked off. But then, once we get to the point where we have that six months worth of data, we'll bring back either an update for council or a presentation. The timeline for making this all happen, we're working on the transit system logo right now. We've got some preliminary options for those three names, but now we'll work in earnest. July eleventh will be the soft launch of the system. And we talk about a pool of customers. They could be anybody from council people to staff members to just try out the app and to make sure things are working okay. We intend to launch for those Dial-A-Ride passengers on July the eighteenth or thereabouts. That would be phase one. And as we mentioned a few minutes ago, four to six months after that, we would start with the full-blown microtransit options. So that concludes my presentation. If staff has any question, or, excuse me, council has any questions, I'm happy to answer. And I think I do see a member of the public with a raised hand for public comment.
Mayor Dean? Can I? Sorry, I just have a question. Can I?
You, you, you still have question?
Yeah, actually, because there's a logo thing. Okay, so my first question is, I mean, because we are going to design logo, will we, are we going to just put a Ride SG there or actually we are putting a picture of our mission playhouse or our city hall? How that will works, I mean, because that, actually, we probably would see in renderings that shows how the vehicle looks like. And because this is a great way that we can promote our city. We're not going everywhere. That shows this is the city and we should pride of that. So how that works? And second question is, do we have any marketing opportunities that will be having like, not bus, but the ride advertisement? And we will generate income for the city?
So starting with your second question first.
Sure.
We haven't considered having those paid advertisements on the outside of buses, but I'm sure that's something we could consider. On the first question, we have some really talented in-house staff who have graphical design backgrounds. And they will be coming up with some logos. And we're actually thinking of using that as part of our outreach, coming up with a couple of different options and putting renderings of what they might look like on those vans and buses. And using that as maybe some sort of a contest or some sort of a way for people to vote on what logo they like the best, but more as a way to drum up some excitement for it before it starts. So we will have a couple of different renderings and a couple of different options. We will look at including things like our logo or the mission somehow, tying it to make it SG-specific, but also trying to make it look cool and new and exciting. So we'll, we'll come back with some of those options and involve the community and council in what the final logo is.
Awesome. So are we going to have any printing materials to promote this, a new transit system? Because on June twenty-fifth, that we have like a Work for Health, the Thanks USA event.
I think they started, they started on July eleventh.
July, okay, I see. So that, that will be just, I'm thinking about if we have any opportunity.
But for upcoming, we definitely could. Initially, the Dial-A-Ride folks, well, we won't do a lot of marketing and outreach to them because they're already our customers. But over the next several months, as we start to roll it out to phase two, I could see us having those kinds of materials and, you know, keychains and pencils and those kinds of things. Booths in our dumping in beer or any of our other events to try and drum up some of that excitement. And maybe next year for Thanks USA.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you, council member. We'll mention that June twenty-fifth, yeah, okay. Right, so. Okay, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mayor, I have no speaker cards, but we do have a member of the public wishing to speak, Debbie Kilgore.
Thank you.
I think it's a good opportunity, but I have a couple negative things to ask about. Number one, well, one, I like Ride San Gabriel because San, it says San Gabriel. And Ride SG, there might be people in other neighborhoods that don't know what that means, where Ride SG is a better name, I think, because it really says our city's name. So the one thing I'm concerned about with what Ms. Machaca said was age. Thirteen is really young. And I'm anxious about that age riding alone on a Dial-A-Ride or a transit thing. School buses are a different thing, but I want to make sure that the drivers have good background checks that show there's no chance of any type of sexual charges or anything along that line. I've worked in the field of forensics where I did a lot of exams on kids and many of them were related to transportation things. I did that for twenty years. And also, how's the cost of gasoline affecting this? Gasoline's not going to go down. It may go down a little bit, but it's not going to drop down. So how are we looking to make sure we maintain this, maintain the service with the price of gasoline that we're seeing right now? So those are a couple of questions I have.
If council would like, I can answer those questions. I would say the name is a matter of taste and we all have different ideas. And so I think we'll never have one that everybody loves, but I appreciate the comment. As far as the background checks, we absolutely require and First Transit requires background checks, full-on fingerprinting and the Department of Justice checks for all of the ri- checks, full-on fingerprinting and the Department of Justice checks for all of the riders and they have to go through classes and all of that, not only for the kids, but seniors are at risk too and we take that very seriously. So that is something that is done. And the cost of gas is a first transit problem, not a city problem. I say that tongue-in-cheek. We have a contract with them. It does have an escalator clause. I'm sure that will go up over the years as, as that happens, but that's factored into our, our contract, but please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Okay. All right.
Pardon me, I just wanted to make a comment in terms of the, the name of the program. Obviously, it's the city council's prerogative to decide what the name is going to be. The only thing I ask is to please keep in mind the real estate on, on mobile application, there's not a whole lot of space. If, if we go San Gabriel Ride or Ride San Gabriel, you're basically taking away space from some other piece of information that we have to display on a mobile application page. That's, that's all.
Thank you. Yeah, I know that on the website right now, if you, the name is short, it's, it's easy to the top ones to get it, people can search that. That's, that's the current technology, you know? So, yeah. I, I, I like a Ride San Gabriel too, but I know that for the technology, maybe the short one is, is help, you know? Yeah. Yeah, okay. But, but, but I just give to my, saw my comments to, you know, okay, to help with that if can't understand it, you know? Yeah. All right.
Mayor, we don't need a formal vote on this item. I have direction from council.
Okay, just direction, right? Don't need the, oh, okay. All right, so we don't need a motion. Next, uh, next item, please.
New business item A, consideration of resolutions relating to the calling of San Gabriel's general municipal election to be held on November 8th, 2022, and I will make the presentation for you this evening. As stated in the title, San Gabriel's next general municipal election is scheduled for November 8th, 2022 for five elected positions. In order for the election to take place, it is necessary for the city council to adopt several resolutions by a two-thirds vote, calling the general municipal election for the election of three council members, city clerk and city treasurer, requesting Los Angeles County to consolidate the election with the statewide general election and provide related services, and adopting regulations for candidate statements. Historically, the council has set a 200-word limit for the candidate statements, so the resolution has been prepared that way, but if council should desire, you could change it to the 400-word limit. Those are the only two options that are provided. So the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number 22-34, calling for the holding of the, of the election, resolution 22-35, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to consolidate, administer, manage and oversee the election, and adopt resolution number 22-36, establishing regulations for candidate statements. That concludes the report.
Okay. Does any council member have a factual question for staff to clarify for the report? No? Chief, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to address council on this item?
Okay. Now is time for the council deliberation and the discussion. Who will be started?
I'm ready to move. No one else wants to start?
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll move. I'm assuming it's just one motion for all three, so I move to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
A motion has been made by the council member Minchada and second by council member Rivera. Please vote.
By a vote of 5-0.
I don't think, because it's very jiggly.
Next item. So next item, okay.
Item B, discussion regarding a past proposal from the Los Angeles County Fire Department to provide fire services to the city of San Gabriel. City Manager Lazaretto will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll do just a couple of sentences of an intro and then I'll turn it over to Chief Wallace. He'll talk about the operational side of this discussion and then I'll talk about the financial implications of the discussion. Just a couple of sentences on why we're here tonight. Over the past four years, the city has received a couple of proposals from the County of Los Angeles to provide fire services. That would mean basically outsourcing our fire service to the city, or excuse me, the County of Los Angeles. That was done in order to figure out what all of our options were and to see if we could save money by going with the Los Angeles County. Over the past few years, that has been brought up in public a few times as to whether we were going to go with the county model or whether we were going to stay with San Gabriel. And so we believe the conclusion that we'll reach tonight is that we are recommending that you do not go LA County and that we put that discussion off, but we wanted to put it on the agenda to have that discussion so that it just doesn't disappear and that we have, in the spirit of transparency, which we have always been in favor of, we'll have this discussion, present the reasons why we're making that recommendation and then if council agrees, we would put that on hold until sometime in the future when our circumstances change and then we would always be looking at any models, not only LA County. So with that, Chief Wallace, I'm handing it over to you.
Okay, great. Good evening again, Mayor Deng, Vice Mayor Harrington and most of the council, Steve Wallace, Fire Chief for the city of San Gabriel. And I'm going to leave this off with a operational overview of what we would get with a county compared to what we currently have now. Do we, do we have a presentation? Right now, we run two fire stations. That model would continue regardless if, if we retain services in the city or if it goes to an outside.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Steve, can I cut you off? Can we take a five-minute recess so we can pull the presentation up? I think this is, there's a lot of numbers and it would be, and Chief's got some information. It would be a lot better with a PowerPoint than it would be us speaking. I must have not given it to Marilyn and so I'll take the blame for that. Can we take a five-minute recess? Thank you very much.
All right, okay. Five minutes for the house break, okay?
Okay, so we continue our regular meeting on the A thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Good evening again, Mayor Deng and Vice Mayor Harrington, the members of the council. We'll resume where I left off. I was starting to talk a little bit about the operational comparisons between the city fire department and surfaces that were quoted for Los Angeles County. I'll show you some similarities and also a few of the differences. As you know, right now, we still hold two fire stations. That would not change. Have you ever looked? Since it's not, would you be kind enough to advance one? All right, third time's always the charmer. So we'll do an operational comparison. As you know, we maintain two fire stations with this in the city of San Gabriel. Each are staffed with a paramedic assessment engine, meaning that it has a capacity to provide paramedic level care but not transport, and one rescue ambulance which provides a full paramedic care as well as transport. And looking at what we would get with the county, you still see two paramedic assessment engines, however, the staffing is different on each. The county quote has three members assigned to each engine, where we are budgeted, have been for years, and are working up to filling up our staffing to have four members on each engine. The paramedic rescue ambulance, which we know as an RA, would be replaced by a squad, which does not have transport capability where our RA does, and there would be two paramedic level members on that rig. As far as battalion chiefs, we have Battalion Five, which is staffed every day by one division chief. Los Angeles County would provide their Battalion Ten, which covers a good portion of the San Gabriel Valley, but would also have one division chief or one battalion chief then covering in that position. As far as fire prevention goes, we do have one deputy fire marshal in the city. Prevention with the county would go to the prevention bureau. There would be one prevention member assigned to the city, and then you see another half member up there, which is a supervisor captain, which is essentially what I do for the deputy firefighter marshal. As far as admin staff, we do have one executive assistant in the fire station. That would be not necessary with the county. And then you have me as a fire chief, and with Los Angeles County, that position is filled by a position called the assistant chief, which would basically be the fire chief of the region. Again, we're going to maintain two stations. So the way that breaks down into the stations is our current station fifty-one, which is the south station. Same type of pumping apparatus, same type of engine, same sort of specifications. They look a little different because they're different manufacturers, and I still think our color red is a little nicer than the county's. But it is staffed with one captain, an engineer, and two firefighters. Out of those four members on that engine, there will always be a minimum of two of them being paramedics. And then with the LA County engine, they do staff a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter, and one of those will be a paramedic. Typically, in the county, it is the firefighter. Moving to Station Fifty-two, or Station Two, or the north station as it's known, the station will remain open. Again, we have Engine Fifty-two there now. Staffing is the same as Fifty-one's with a captain, engineer, and two firefighters. And again, maintaining our paramedic assessment status, we'll have two paramedic members on that apparatus. And with LA County, same staffing as they would have at Station Fifty-One, with a captain, engineer, and firefighter, and one paramedic member, so they do have assessment capabilities as well. In the rescue ambulance, the biggest difference between these two, as you can see on the left, is our new rescue ambulance. On the right is the county squad. The county squad does not have transport capability where our ambulance does. The thought is with the squads that it frees up the paramedics on calls that they don't need to do a basic level of care. However, it does require a private ambulance to show up on scene to transport without the county paramedic. With our service model, we are providing paramedic level transport on each and every call, and we do bill accordingly. With the squad concept and not the rescue ambulance, you have a contract with the company either through the county, or such as Kerry Ambulance, McCormick, something, but this is similar to what you would see, which shows up, two EMTs on scene and does your BLS level transports or your basic transports. If required, paramedic level care, county paramedics will ride on that ambulance with the squad following up to the hospital. So truck companies, known as ladder trucks or quints. We do not operate a truck company at this time, and the county proposal does not place a truck, or a quint is what the county calls them, within the city. We do have our automatic aid agreements in place that provides truck service to us, and those come from generally Alhambra, Monterey Park, Arcadia, and Pasadena. Our two closest auto aid trucks, which are what we call the first into our city, are Alhambra, which is two point three miles away, and I took the measurements from Delmar and Mission to get the average as far as where they were. So Alhambra Truck Seventy-One is two point three miles, and Monterey Park Quint Sixty-One is four miles away. The two closest county quints are at two point nine miles and five point six. Our auto aid trucks right now are slightly closer. This does vary depending on traffic patterns and time of day. That's what you would see, or that's what you currently see coming into our city with the Alhambra truck, and then the Monterey Park Quint, which is very much modeled after a county apparatus. And the big difference in this is that the quint has five items on it. It has an aerial ladder, it has ground ladders, it carries a water tank, it carries hose, and it actually has a pump on it. Where the traditional truck company, it just has the aerial ladder, the ground ladders, it has rescue and extrication equipment, but it doesn't have pumping capacity. With regards to the battalion chiefs, the battalion chief Battalion Five is a shift commander. It acts as the incident commander on multiple unit responses and large-scale incidents. It's dispatched automatically on fires, rescues, multi-casualty incidents, and serves as acting fire chief as assigned when I'm unavailable, and it's dedicated to the city of San Gabriel. Its primary responsibility is the city of San Gabriel. The battalion chief also fulfills many administrative and operational responses. On large-scale incidents, we do get an automatic aid battalion chief from surrounding cities, so any known fire, any known technical rescue, we will have a second chief come in to provide more oversight and managerial support. LA County Battalion Chief functions in many of the same ways. It's the shift commander for the local area. The biggest difference here is that, while Battalion Five is dedicated to the city of San Gabriel, Battalion Ten covers Temple City, Rosemead, Elmani, and a lot of the unincorporated areas around here. So he has a greater coverage area. There are other county battalion chiefs that do respond in similar, on similar large incidents, and actually due to some of our auto aid agreements, incidents east of Delmar Avenue, where I know we do get a county battalion chief and engine. So you see they're responsible for a lot bigger coverage area and have a bit longer response time to get into our city. So as far as fire prevention goes, as I mentioned before, we do have our own fire, full-time deputy fire marshal who reports to me. It's based in Margorty with the community development folks. He's available at City Hall and in the field on a daily basis. The LA County Fire Prevention Spanish list will have office hours within the city but is based out of their fire prevention bureau, will come into the city as needed for plan checks and inspections, and that reports to a fire prevention captain, which is the half-time or half-person that I showed in the staffing chart. Other positions that would not necessarily exist with the county is our fire admin, our executive assistant, who takes care of our billing, scheduling, supports the chiefs, does our AP, our staffing, school tours, station visits, records management, and a myriad of other activities. And then the fire chief's position would be eliminated but would be fulfilled for things like council meetings and work with the city by a regional assistant chief. And I'll hand it back to Mr. Lazaro.
So going into the budget analysis, I'll breeze through these first couple of slides because we just had our budget presentation, but I need to lay some of the foundation because the county proposal is less expensive overall than the current city's fire department to the entire city. The issue becomes the items that we retain if we were to go county and then also the retirement tax. It's more expensive to the general fund, so I have to lay a little bit of that information. Just as a reminder, our overall city budget's about eighty-two million. Our general fund budget is about forty-six million, and of that forty-six million, about nine point one million is the retirement tax. From that retirement, our overall retirement cost, about two point eight million, almost two point nine million is our normal cost. The UAL is almost seven million. Both of those are covered by our retirement tax. The retiree health of about a million and a half dollars a year is not covered by that retirement tax. So building on what Chief Wallace just presented, it would provide a, as close as possible, an apples-to-apples replacement for the city's fire department. There are two proposals that they offered, an option A and an option B. Option B would be not including the paramedic assessment engine. It would only be the basic life support, the BLS ambulance model, and so that would not be the apples-to-apples comparison, and it only saves a few thousand dollars. So we have not looked at all at that option B. When we've done all of our comparisons, it would be option A, which would be the comparison. Two things I do want to point out, the county in their proposal gives us a fifty percent cost sharing for the paramedic squad, the RA fifty-one, and the reason for that is they know that that unit will be servicing the area on the whole, and so more than fifty percent, or approximately fifty percent of the time, it would be outside of the city providing aid to those other parts of the county that are underserved right now. So the cost for that paramedic squad is subsidized fifty percent by the county. Similarly, Station Fifty-two, they have figured out in their model that at least twenty-five percent of the time, it would be benefiting the county on the whole, and so they are giving us a twenty percent, twenty-five percent, excuse me, cost sharing on that model. So it would be twenty-five percent more if we were to have it only in our city. The contract that they propose in all of their cities includes a maximum annual increase of five and a half percent, and as I said earlier, it all gets paid with our general fund. Because it comes as a bill to us and not broken out by retirement, and our retirement tax is very specific that it can only be used to pay for the retirement of city of San Gabriel employees, we would not, we've checked with our attorneys, and with the county, we would not be able to use our retirement fund to pay for any portion of the LA County proposal, and that becomes important. One thing that I'm going to gloss over, what I'm doing, the comparison of the two models, are something called conversion costs, and this is quite a big price tag. I'm glossing over it because this is a one-time cost. They spread it over three years. It would be spread over the first three years of the contract. It would be about two million dollars, so approximately six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year on top of the normal contract cost for a three-year period, but I don't include it because it's a one-time cost, and I'm looking more at the annual cost of service going forward. If we can't afford that annual cost of service, it doesn't really matter what that conversion cost would be. But just so you all know what goes into that, it would be all of the equipment that Chief Wallace showed you. It would be rebranding that to the LA County model. It would be going through all of our supplies and equipment, and anything that the county doesn't use in their arsenal, that would get replaced with our own, with their own supplies, so that they don't have to supply two different things to two different stations. It would also be training for our employees to be in the county model. There's over four hundred thousand dollars of costs for them to send all of our employees to the county training academy for a few months in order to train them on the county way. But again, these costs are not included. If we were ever to consider the county model, we would have to figure out how to incorporate an added cost in those first three years. So when we go through the comparisons, the first thing we start with is the revenue. We receive, believe it or not, over eight hundred thousand dollars a year from ambulance billing. The majority of that comes from insurance companies. When we give somebody a ride in our ambulance, we give them a bill, and they submit that bill to their insurance carrier, and nine times out of ten, we are remitted for that bill. That adds up to about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our budget this year that the council recently adopted. If we were to go with county, we would receive some of that for the ALS calls, but none of the BLS calls, because the county would use that BLS ambulance. We figured about sixty percent of those calls are ALS calls, excuse me, so we were estimating for the county, we would retain about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of ambulance revenue. Fire fees are all of those fees paid for plan checks, for any of the annual inspections that we do, the occupancy inspections. We would retain all of that with the county model except for the county's five percent administrative overhead. So that's just a twenty thousand dollar difference from three hundred and eighty thousand to four hundred thousand. And then our net reimbursable overtime. Earlier in the evening, Chief Wallace mentioned that we send firefighters all throughout the state on fires. We get paid for that by the state, including the overtime and overhead for all of our engines and apparatus and administration costs. That nets us approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year over and above what we pay our employees for those costs. We would not receive that anymore if we were with the county. And then finally, the retirement fund transfer in, we pay out of our budget to the fire department, about two point nine million dollars goes to be paid by the retirement tax fund. Of that, if we were to go to the county model, we retain that, the UAL, the unfunded liability, so we would continue having to pay that for the next thirty years or so until that goes away. So that would stay with the city, that two point one million dollars, and that would be able to be paid by the retirement tax. So overall, when you look at what we call the revenues, or identify as the revenues, the city revenues are about four point four million, and if we went with the county model, that would be about three million. Going to the next section, which would be expenditures, the annual fee for the county cost is eight point nine million. This first line is what I was talking about, that when you look at face our city budget for the fire department versus the county option, it looks like it's a savings of almost two million dollars, or actually a little more than two million dollars. Eight point nine, almost nine million dollars versus eleven point five million dollars, so it's almost two and a half million dollars. But that's, again, that's not netting out any of the things that we are able to pay for out of our other funds. So when you drop down to the county option, the UAL that remains with the city, which we talked about in the previous slide, of about two point one million dollars that we pay for out of our retirement tax, that stays with the city. And then that retiree healthcare insurance for those employees that are already retired, that costs us about three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year just for the fire employees that have retired already. So that would stay with the city forever because those firefighters would have already stayed, been retired. As a side note, the other thing that we didn't include in our analysis is the retiree health. If our city employees were to go to the county, I'm guessing they would want to retain those retiree health benefits that they have accumulated over the last twenty years, so we would potentially have to negotiate that benefit with them, and that could be several hundred thousand to a couple of million dollars when you look at the thirty employees that would be going over. So that's not included in this analysis. If we ever decided in the future to take this up again, that would be another one-time cost we would have to add on to the opening of the contract. And then finally, the two remaining items are, oh, I'm sorry, there's a true-up of the workers' comp and the general liability. We contacted the Cal JPIA, who is our insurance provider, and asked us to give, asked them to give us, excuse me, an estimate of the cost if we were not to have a fire department, and it turns out that our budgeting is pretty darn close when we allocate our costs for the general liability and workers' comp to each of the departments. We're within about eighty-seven thousand dollars of what that cost would be for just a fire department. So we would take eighty-seven thousand dollars and actually add it as an expense to the city fire cost. And then those final two are the allocated costs. Just to give you an understanding of what that is, the fleet costs that we allocate to fire are about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. They're actually more than that, but when, if we were to convert to LA County, we would retain about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars with the city. And the reason for that is because if we were to go to LA County and we were to not have fire engines to service or their equipment, it wouldn't necessarily mean that we would reduce the number of staffing we have in our fleet services department, so those costs would have to be allocated throughout the rest of the organization. We did pull out all of the parts and equipment and all of the outside service costs that we have for those fire engines, and pulled all of those out, and what's remaining is about two hundred and seventeen thousand. And the same is for IT at a much lower level, but that IT cost would have to be reallocated throughout the city. So when you look at the bottom line of the expenses, it's about eleven point seven million for the county cost, and then eleven point five million for the city cost. So when you boil all that down, and we go back to the expenses on the bottom and the revenues on the top, the net cost to the city for maintaining our own, and this is just the general fund, remember, the net cost to the city for maintaining our own fire department for the general fund is just over seven million, seven million eighty thousand, and the cost to the general fund if we were to go to LA County would be eight point seven million. So that's about a one point six million dollar cost difference to the city's general fund. So for those reasons, we are recommending that the So for those reasons, we are recommending that the city council put this proposal on hold. We would look at something else in the future. If, you know, if we weren't able to recruit or retain employees in a couple of years, we would have to look at all models. We would look at models like, you know, going back to maybe a three-city model with some other cities around us. There's been talk of a Verdugo model, where all of the Verdugo cities get together and the employees become employees of a JPA. And then we pay into that cost and have control over it and save some money that way. We would look at all options, and one of those options could be the county in the future. But for the time being, it does not seem to make sense for a cost basis. And that's not including whether the community would even support, no matter what the cost would be, for us to outsource our fire department. So with that, that is Chief Wallace's and I, our reports. We'd both be happy to answer any questions. And just a reminder, this isn't a formal item for a vote tonight. Just need direction from staff, I'm sorry, from the city council. And the recommendation would be to discontinue discussions with LA County for fire services.
Okay, does any council member have the factual question for the staff or to clarify the report? Okay, Vice Mayor Herring.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, on, the one thing is the UAL, that kind of, I understood we'll still have it, but we should be clear that, right now, we're not completely paying it down. It's just pushing it and pushing it and pushing it. Once we would separate, if they went to county, then that UL is going to keep getting smaller. So eventually, that number's going to go down, correct? So with 15, 20 years down the line, that 2.1 million will completely be gone. So that would go off the balance sheet eventually. So those numbers in long term would really be different. So this is a present, looking right now snapshot. This doesn't amortize any of these numbers over the next five, 10, 15 years. So even with increases that we're going to have versus increases that the county would have, like I say, 5.5% is our limit, our cap, those numbers are eventually going to, if you put a chart out there, are going to be different. This is a one, this is a present value, not a future value analysis, correct?
You're correct. The short answer is you're correct. If we were going to look at a county model, we would have to get deeper into that, and we could, we could project things out for 20 years. The same could be said for our UAL that we retain. If PERS does the performance returns the way they project and the assumptions don't change, then both of those would go down at the same rate over time. And in 25 years, we will have no UAL either way. And in fact, we're going to have no UAL either way, because PERS is amortizing it out over that time period. But the fire model could go down quicker.
But it's rolling, though. It's a rolling 20 years, not goes down. They just, the years move every single year.
We get a new tranche every single year.
Yeah, so it's, I understand how it works, I'm just saying so.
Right.
Eventually, we'd have no tranche at all. That zero year stops moving, and the current year gets to there, and then it's zero.
You're right. But we would have several years of what our projection is here before we'd start to see the benefit. But yes, if we were to look at going, outsourcing no matter where it was, that's one factor we'd have to go into more detail about.
Because that's another thing, we could pay the UAL right now at present value and defray interest, because if we can get a better interest rate, we can arbitrage the interest.
That's right.
Okay. So Chief Vasilek, do we have any public comment?
I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on this matter?
Okay. And it's now time for the council deliberation and the discussion. Who will be started?
All right, just one question for the chief, or for Mark. So what is the feedback that you're getting from your department about the report about not pursuing this anymore?
Sure. As you can imagine, it's been very emotional since this whole subject came up, and it's gone left and right and up and down. About two weeks ago, in an association meeting, they did finally put the question to the membership of, do you want to go to the county or not? And they approved by overwhelming majority that they would like to stay as the City of San Gabriel Fire Department.
And just adding to that, I've spoken with the membership of the association as soon as last night, and asked if they were going to be here tonight. And they said, our position has not changed since what we've talked to you about, and we are in alignment with the city's recommendation.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
Okay. Any?
We're not completely taking it off. I mean, in the future, if it can come back up, right, like five years, 10 years from now, they want to bring it up again? Or are we just saying no forever?
As with any item that you vote on, if you come back next meeting and decide to bring it up and vote differently, you certainly could. We're saying it doesn't make sense for the near future. If things change in the future, such as the economy, or the state of the way firefighting services work, or, as I said, we can't retain or recruit great employees.
Right.
We would look at all models, and certainly the county would be one of them.
I have one question for Chief Wallace. Thank you so much for the report. Just to verify one more thing, that to convert to the county, that means in the future, any business owner, they would like to start their business, and they would need to go through the fire investigation, like check, check the sprinkler system. They cannot get any assistance from our local city fire department. They have to go to Irwindale or some other places. Is that correct?
That's a good question, because it's going to affect a lot of people. That's absolutely correct. There will still be fire prevention that's done for the city. And there will still be office hours kept by a prevention specialist within the city. But to be able, it would not be the same as to be able to go to City Hall now, or be able to call our DFM and get something probably, you know, done at the last minute. It would still get done, the structure of how it would get done and where you would have to go to do it would change, yes.
So besides the distance, how, what is the time difference between getting help from the city fire FD instead of like getting help from the county?
That's a hard one for me to speculate, because I don't work for the county Fire Prevention Bureau, and I don't know what their workload is like. I would imagine it's similar to us, though, that when, when we're busy, that it takes longer to get something processed. What I will say is, when we're busy, we can look at every day and prioritize what we're going to do. Where I believe in something the size of the county, the workload gets spread, there's a lot of work to do, and the projects stay where they are. Again, I would have a hard time speculating, and give you a completely accurate answer on that, because I'm not, have a lot of information with their prevention bureau.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilman Wu, I can answer that. Actually, I've had the experience from the other side of the county, other side of the counter, as a community development director for two different cities that had county as the fire provider, one of them in LA County and one of them in Orange County. I can say the only area where the level of service isn't the same is with exactly what you asked. And it's not so much the timing difference, it's that usually there are three offices that are involved in permitting process, a different office for the fire sprinklers, a different office for fire prevention, and then another one for the alarm side. One of them's in commerce, one of them is in the city of industry, and there's another one, I can't remember where the third one is. So it's that, people having to go to different places to get a permit through. And then the biggest thing is you lose that person at the top who oversees all of that. Whereas if, you know, somebody has a problem with a business here, they can talk to Chief Wallace, or they can talk to Aldo, our community development director, or, you know, worst case scenario, they can talk to me or one of you all. And you can, you can help to run interference for somebody and make sure the city's giving that level of service. When they're looking for that help from the county, the county is a great model, but they're talking to an organization that has thousands of employees and doesn't offer that same customer service touch. In my experience, that's the only area where it is not 100% comparable.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So staff recommendation, it's a city council direct staff to discontinue discuss with the LA County at this time. So like Councilmember Rivera, I say, it's will be long time, five year or how many year, have a time range. So all just next council meeting will be bring back again?
I'd say 10 years.
So have a timeline, so expanding, you know?
Sure. If we think back a couple of weeks to the presentation I did on the state of the department, I mentioned that we need to reevaluate our service model in probably about five-year increments. If we say we're going to do any one thing for the rest of existence, that's very irresponsible. What we do changes, the services change, the demands from the citizens change, and so we need to keep abreast of that. We need to see what the cost-efficient ways are to deliver excellent service. So my recommendation would be to come at a minimum of five-year intervals and reexamine what we're doing, whether it's our department, whether it's a consolidation, but just look at what we're doing and make sure we're doing the right thing.
Okay. And also, I, last, last council meeting, I think your presentations regarding the fire zone, our city, the fire zone, the level was going up, right? I hear about it, probably next year, they're going up again, similar to the most county one. It's number one, right? Right now, from three to two, right?
We went from, correct, we went from three to two.
Yeah.
I did some research, because you did have a question about surrounding areas, that came up during the presentation. In the county right now, depending on where you are and what the infrastructure is. It ranges between three and nine.
Yes, three to nine, yeah.
The county does not have any jurisdictions that are a Class 1 rating at this time.
Okay, so that's meaning our, the city, the fire department doing a very good job, otherwise hard to get the rating approved, improved, right? Okay. So, yeah. And I think also, think about maybe Fire Fighter Association or community member. I think maybe they're asking, how long will we discontinue discuss on, right? So, but the suggestion is five years, but I know also, because we want, if the fire association or like most council member staff so agree, so maybe we want to save time, don't want to, because they do the research, I think also spend our staff time to do that, right? Okay. So for the time, cost efficient, probably, yeah, I just, for myself, also agree the staff recommendation, so we can move on at a community understanding. So we have the, first of all, I think we have a good fire department to service our city and the community. So we maybe, it's a good suggestion to move on, but rest of council members agree or not, so we don't need a vote, right?
Does anybody object to the staff recommendation?
No.
Well, okay. So, yeah, we just move on, right? Okay. Next, public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda?
Okay. City manager, report?
Mayor, just a heads up, was thinking that with the July 5th meeting being on a Tuesday right after the July 4th holiday, that I would do my best to keep that meeting, no agenda items, so we could cancel that. If there's something that absolutely has to come up, I'll let you know, or we could schedule a special meeting, but it looks like right now, we'd be canceling that meeting and giving everybody a long weekend if nobody has a problem with that.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. So cancel the July 5th meeting, is that right? Okay. And then council comment and the conference report?
Yes, Mayor Dean? Okay, I just want to report that I have attended the memorial ceremony hosted by Rose Mead City, that on, actually, on May 30th. So it was a great event, and I was the only one, you know, presented as a city council members, and also other city's council members in that event. So there were a couple, you know, conversation I would like to share with my colleagues, because they asked me, why don't you stay in your city and just attend your city's event, why you come here? So it's kind of embarrassed somehow, because I understand that in our city, that we don't have any memorial, war-related memorial monument in our city. So I did have a conversation with Mark, our city manager, and we actually have our local communities, people, they're trying to put the things together, and they would like to have a monument to, you know, remembers those lives being sacrificed in the war. So I would like to suggest my colleagues that to consider that we should really put that on our agenda. So next time, next meeting, maybe we can just have a discussion. And if we can just have some kind of, you know, I would say the monument that will be made in our city, maybe Smith's Park, then we will have our own event next year. So that's the first event I attended and would like to report. And the second one, event that I attended was the Asian World Film Festival last Sunday. It was a great event, too, because they invited one of the very good, you know, they invited the director and producer of one rewarded movies, it's called American Girls. And I have a chance to talk to the organizer of that event, and I invited them, don't host an event in Hollywood, because we have, this is an Asian movie, Asian films. And they invited those people from Taiwan, and that is a very impressive, it's a, you know, they have a red carpet, they have a lot of young generations, young people, young audience attended that event. And I think that most of the people, they actually, they went there from our San Gabriel Valley and to the Hollywood. So I invited them, saying, why don't you try our city? Actually, we have like, we, this is a city with multicultural, and we have a great place, like a playhouse, and they would like to come here and see. So the only thing is, we probably would like to send out an invitation to that organization and see if they would like to take a look if this is the right place, because they need to play the movies. So they want to make sure the playhouse has the right size, the standard size of the movie screen, that they are able to, you know, play that movie. To, you know, that is also respecting the producers and directors. They don't want to make that smaller, you know? But I think that this is a perfect fit, if we can have those kind of event and generate more income for our playhouse in the future. So that is some event I attended, and I have learned. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wu, and Councilmember Minchak.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I wanted to let everyone know that Florence Lynn, who's the outstanding older American for San Gabriel this year, she was given a Congressional Award by Judy Chu for Woman of the Year. Four of us attended that event, and so she's having a wonderful year. But it was very exciting to be there, to be part of the group that was honoring her. There was also, I think, eight other cities, or there's like 10 altogether, so maybe it was nine cities. Not every city made a recommendation, actually not city, but residents had to make a recommendation. And it's individuals, women who have made a contribution to the city, so you don't have to live in the city, but as long as you've made a contribution. So I was glad that we were there to support her as a council, and she was very grateful. Second, regarding the monument that you happened to mention, too, last night, I did get a chance to listen to a commission meeting, which was Community Services, and that was on their agenda. So I would suggest to let that process take place. The Community Services Commission actually looked at two different areas, the pickleball, which was also, I think, brought to our attention. So they're going through the process, they've gone through stage one, and then they've asked for more information, and then they're going to make a recommendation to us. So I would just ask that, we let that process continue on, and it looks like, hopefully, only one or two more meetings, and that commission is now meeting every month. And so they're actually going to have a special meeting in July to be able to make some type of recommendation for council, but both groups were of recommendation for council, but both groups were asked to come back with some more information. So I, again, I would suggest you look at the YouTube, or all of us look at the YouTube video, and I thought it was very, very helpful, I was very impressed with our commissioners. We really do have just such dedicated and passionate commissioners that really take their job very seriously and who are really custodians, whether it's of our parks or historical, you know, treasures. We are just a very fortunate community to have such commissioners who really are just volunteers. So I agree we should do something, but I just ask that we let that process take place first. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
I also had the pleasure of attending Florence's Woman of the Year event with, that was hosted by Judy Chu, very gracious of her, even though she's in the middle of an election, she still found the time to be there and honor a lot of women from a lot of different cities, which is, was a great event, because my colleagues and I were the ones representing the City of San Gabriel, and people noticed that she had a strong support system. I also agree with John Wu, even if we don't have a monument, we should still do something, you know, maybe flags in the park, or some kind of, just a memorial for our veterans and our cities. That's very important. I think Mayor Ding suggested we do Man of the Year also, because there's no, there's only woman, Woman of the Year, and he wants, he wants one for Man of the Year, so maybe that can be in the future, too. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, yeah, and, yeah, it's thanks, the, yeah, Florence Lynn is, she's ready to do the good tremendous job, good job for our, especially San Gabriel City, and on the personal target, Florence Lynn, she's living in Acadia, she's, but she said, told me, she feel like I'm a San Gabriel resident. So a lot of event, the San Gabriel event, she attend a lot, it's really, yeah, outreach, like for the past two years, for the like COVID testing, vaccine, she really do the good job, and the PPE, and actually, she really appreciate me, because I got the Chinese community, the PPE, and I'm first, the organization, to donate the PPE to their organization to let them can send it out to, for the, like, kids needed the PPE. So I, because I saw hers do the good job, I really want to support her, too. Okay, so, yeah, we, that's meaning we have a good choice for the, we can old American, but sometimes people, they say they want the youngest American. Okay, all right, so, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, it's actually not age, right? Okay, yeah, and it's a good, still, yeah, I have a chance to, yeah, it's Florence Lynn do a good job, and also I echo the Councilmember Wu, go to the, called Asia Fest, Moving Festival. Actually, I go there, like, Minnesota goes, another event, they have a movie, it's from mainland China, it's a good movie for their current, like, even for myself, it's, it's see their current culture, it's very good, and I mentioned that, too. The one thing, so I just want to know what Mission Playhouse can have, put on movie on there, or just for the staging performance, I don't know. We can have a movie, too? Okay, that's a good idea, so, so, Councilmember Wu, that's your job to approach.
It's my pleasure to be a lead, you know?
I will help, too, okay, okay. All right, and another things, yeah, I really like to just announce that my organization, total, total three, four organization, when it's San Gabriel Hope Alliance Club, and Hope Center, and IPAC, and AAAA4A, it's Asia Global Coast Guard Alliance, and the four organization will be hosted on the June 25th, and they call it SANKS USA, that we, the first purpose, it's to show our first generation, the immigration, the SANKS USA to, United to give to us opportunities to stay education, living, and we show our appreciation. Actually, every year, we, this event will start from 2015, every year we honor the veteran, okay, at least we have quota, it's a five veteran, depends if the people requested more than five, so we still can give to them, to honor. We also have give to the veteran, the certificate and the gift card, too. So, so I think this time, this year, the last year, it was the first time they moved from the Temple City to our city, San Gabriel, that this year, still in the San Gabriel Mission, next to the Mission Playhouse and the parking lot. So I, I think maybe at least for our community organization, it's already tried help our city to honor our veteran, right, to, maybe we still have a chance to catch up, right? So hopefully this event, I invite all of the council member, commission, our commission, and all the resident to, if you have a chance, to attend this event, because we, this year, we also have the CAREFIA, it's a free, like, examination, the eye examination, or the rest of allowed, I can't count the, because they, we got from the Christian Hero Center and China Tank Service Center, they provide a doctor to help to us to this kind of event. So it's a total property, have the fifty booths, so even have the county mental health have the coming to, have the booths to education the community, because I know the current, it's a lot of, we concerned, especially concerned the mental health issue, right? And so I just want to use this opportunity to promote this event, it's a, hopefully all the community can have benefit on it. Or early morning, we have the Walk for Health, if it's try, actually Walk for Health, also for my, it's my idea, to let the people walk in there to the Mission District, know our city's history, where I'm really proud of our city's history, the founder of the LA Place, right? Okay, so it's a fun, and also have the student, the kids, the painting contest, yeah, okay. Also, if you win, have some gift card, too. All right, so everybody welcome, so, and also can, like, Councilmember Wu feel that like Memorial Day, but we maybe just postpone the Memorial on the June 25th, we have this kind of event, all right? And the thanks, also thanks to staff, Rebecca did a good job to provide this, the place for us, right? Okay, that's my comments, and then, next one, it's a closing session, again, okay?
Thank you, Admiral Mayor, and Councilmember Wu, we do have one closed session scheduled for today, and that's conference with legal counsel regarding potential litigation.
Okay, the city council will now reassess to the closing section, we'll be beginning at, so we need a house break, another ten minutes, right? Right now, nine twenty-six, and then nine thirty-six, okay? Next, regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at six thirty. Okay. Should I? The meeting's still not adjourned, right?